End user perspectives will come to order. Good morning, I'd like to welcome everyone to the third in a series of hearings to examine the CFTC's reauthorization in advance of writing legislation. Yesterday, the committee heard from CFTC Commissioners Scott O'Malley, Mark Wiegand. It proved to be a productive and insightful conversation that I hope will continue today. Today, we're joined by a diverse group of representatives from across the spectrum of end users. Today's panelists will share the perspectives of the farmers, manufacturers, transportation firms, utility companies, and others who produce the goods and services that every American consumes each day. Well-functioning markets are essential to help the... One needs to look no further than our witnesses here today to understand how important it is for the CFTC to get its regulations right. Thank each of our witnesses for appearing here today to share your thoughts about how to improve both the operations and the regulations of the Commodities Futures Trade Commission. It's important for the committee to hear your views, and because ultimately derivatives markets exist to support end users, not financial firms. Although derivatives markets have been broadly mischaracterized as opaque, risky, and exotic, the reality for end users is far more mundane. Derivatives contracts are a part of everyday life for thousands of businesses. They enable risk to be transferred from those who are willing to pay to avoid it, so that manufacturing, energy production, and operations costs can all be predicted to a reasonable degree of certainty. As a result, the price of buying a box of cereal, paying your power or gas bill, or buying an airline ticket home for Thanksgiving will hopefully remain relatively stable. This transfer of risk allows businesses to free up productive capital, to invest in new products, to build new facilities, and to hire new employees. Unfortunately, despite Congress's clear intent to exempt end users from the blunt instrument of Dodd-Frank, the past two years have been a regulatory roller coaster for them. As I mentioned in yesterday's hearing, I'm concerned about the impact that delays and last-minute no-action letters are having on how market participants manage their businesses. The lack of business certainty has no doubt caused many companies valuable capital and changed their strategic thinking. Regulations should be created and exist to protect markets, not to destroy them. I look forward to hearing the comments of our witnesses on the rulemaking processes and how well the CFTC works to address the concerns they raise throughout. The perspective of today's witnesses are essential to crafting a forward-looking reauthorization bill, and I want to thank them again for taking the time to visit with us today. With that, I'd like to turn to my colleague from Georgia, the ranking member David Scott, for his opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I join you in welcoming our distinguished witnesses, who certainly are looking forward to their important testimony. But today's hearing is vitally important, as it reminds us of why the markets regulated by the CFTC exist in the first place, which is to serve companies both large and small, as well as individuals, small businesses, like farmers and their co-ops, in managing their business risk. It's important to ensure that our markets function as they are intended, and that as end users need them to, in order that they can engage in the legitimate hedging activities necessary for their business operations. However, I must say that right now, it's perhaps the case that things are not quite operating as they should. We do have an issue that certainly is bubbling its head up, that we certainly need to just watch very carefully at this point, and that is whether banks should own and control vast storages, warehouses, and oil tankers, pipelines, and shipment, and the distribution of commodities like aluminum, like gasoline. Is that fair? And the delays in timing of getting these commodities like aluminum and gasoline to manufacturers and end users. And the fundamental question is if these activities could pose another risk or crisis to our nation's financial system. So as our committee is charged with management's risk in commodities, we have to keep a very jauntous eye on this as to whether or not particularly this results in mass inflated pricing. And it's very important to note that with this, we must know that banks, holding companies, are allowed certain commodity activities that are complementary to financial activities, and they are permissible for bank-holding companies. But it's something that is there, and of course, members of this body, as well as my constituents, have concerns about that, and the oil markets as well. So a careful examination of how commodity markets are functioning currently with the perspective of those using them to hedge commodity risk is vitally important as we continue discussions about the future of the FCTC, and the stability, and yes, the even playing field for all of our end users, so that we protect our banking system, we protect our end users, we protect our financial system, and in fact, the world economy, and be careful not to ease into another crisis unintentionally. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd now like to welcome our panel of witnesses this morning. We've got Mr. Scott Cordis, President CHS Hedging, Inc., St. Paul, Minnesota, on behalf of the National Council of Farmer Cooperatives. We've got Mr. Lance Kottswor, is that close, Lance? Okay, does Lance be okay? Senior Compliance Attorney, the Gavion Group LLC, Omaha, Nebraska, on behalf of the Commodity Markets Council. We've got Mr. Richard F. McBayhan, Vice President, Edison Electric, here in Washington, DC. We've got Chris Monroe, Treasurer, from Southwest Airlines, in Dallas. We've got Andrew Soto, Senior Managing Counsel, Regulatory Affairs, American Gas Association here in DC. And we've got Mr. Gene Guilford, National and Regional Policy Counsel, Connecticut Energy Marketeers Association, Cromwell, Connecticut, on behalf of the Commodity Markets Oversight Coalition. Mr. Cordis, you're ready to begin, and we've got about five minutes if you could hold to the time.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Conway, and ranking member Scott, and members of the committee, thank you for holding this hearing to review key issues to end users as you prepare for CFTC reauthorization. I am Scott Cordis, President of CHS Hedging and Commodity Brokerage subsidiary of CHS, Inc. CHS is a proud member of the National Council of Farmer Cooperatives, and I appear here today on behalf of NCFC. Farmer cooperatives are an important part of the success of American agriculture, in particular by providing commodity price risk management tools to their member owners. Farmer cooperatives help mitigate commercial risk in the production, processing, and selling of a broad range of agricultural, energy, and food products. As you know, co-ops have long used exchange traded futures and options to hedge the price risk of commodities they purchase, supply, process, or handle for their members. In recent years, over-the-counter derivatives or swaps have also become increasingly important to hedge price risk. In fact, swaps play a critical role in the ability of cooperatives to provide forward contracts especially involved to markets. Therefore, the committee oversight of CFTC during the Dodd-Frank rulemaking process has been instrumental in ensuring that co-ops and farmers continue to have access to needed risk management tools. Continued oversight is important as the process turns from one of rulemaking to one of compliance. This shift is something that NCFC members are now grappling with. They must clearly understand the provisions of the regulations, while also figuring out how different regulations will fit together in a coherent framework. In some instances, co-ops are finding it challenging to understand how to be compliant, even as they spend significant amount of resources to address the new regulations. Part of the concern also lies with CFTC's eventual enforcement of the new regulations. As we have throughout the process, we urge CFTC to continue to work closely with the industry and take a collaborative approach to the compliance. This would be a continuation of the willingness that CFTC has shown to listen to our concerns during the rulemaking process. Other rules that have not yet been finalized continue to cause uncertainty over the new costs that will be imposed on agriculture industry. For instance, swap dealers, who co-ops often use to lay off risk, must comply with capital margin requirements that are still unknown. While these costs will be and how they will be processed or passed on to end users remains to be seen, and could dramatically impact the cost-effectiveness of hedging in the OTC market. There still is the question of whether the so-called prudential regulators will require bank swap dealers to collect margin from end users. We appreciate this committee's work on the issue and house passage of the Business Risk Mitigation and Price Stabilization Act. Clearly, mandatory margin would increase costs to hedgers, operations, and ultimately discourage prudent hedging practices. Similarly, we are waiting to see what we contain in the revised position limits rule. As explained further in my written statement, two key areas of that rule we ask this committee to focus on closely are the definition of bona fide hedge and the reporting of aggregated positions. Commercial hedgers could be adversely affected if those issues are not properly addressed. In other instances, rules have been finalized, and we're just now finding where it'll be difficult or impossible to comply. In these instances, we have to request no action relief to the regulation from CFTC. For example, one CFTC regulation imposes phone-recording requirements on some entities, such as grain elevators, who provide brokerage services so their farmer customers can hedge on exchanges. Because those elevators are technically branch offices associated with a futures commission merchant, they are bound by the same recording requirements as required as the FCM. However, given the infrequent and low volume of futures transactions handled by those branches, complying with the phone-recording requirements under this regulation would not be economically feasible. The cost to comply with this regulation would in many cases exceed the total revenues of those FCM branches. In addition, the recording and indexing of cell phone conversation poses a huge challenge. If enforced, this regulation would mean that many local branches would no longer be able to offer these risk management options. We hope you will support us in this effort. Lastly, I would like to highlight an issue that has generated a lot of attention with the industry right now: additional protections for futures customers. NCFC supports much of what CFTC has proposed in the wake of MF Global imperium failures to protect customers. However, we're concerned with the potential unattended consequences that a one-size-fits-all regulation may have on hedgers and smaller FCMs. In addition to increased costs for hedgers, this proposed rule would be more financially and operationally burdensome to firms like farmer cooperative-owned FCMs which work with hedgers. We are concerned with several aspects of the proposed regulations, including changes around capital charges, residual interests, and establishment of risk management systems, especially concerning this requirement that an FCM's residual interest in customer-secured account must at all times be sufficient to exceed the sum of potential margin calls. This is counter to the historical interpretation that would actually require customers, as farmers, to front additional dollars to fund their hedge accounts, while providing little in the way of additional protection. While my written testimony delves deeper into those concerns, I'd be pleased to elaborate on the issue or answer any other questions you may have. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Lance, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. Ranking Member Scott and members of the subcommittee, thank you for the invitation today. My name is Lance Kottswor. I work for Gavion in Omaha, Nebraska, and I'm a senior compliance attorney for them. I am testifying today on behalf of the Commodity Markets Council. CMC is a trade association comprised of exchanges and their industry counterparts. Our activities include the complete spectrum of commercial end users, including all the futures markets and all of energy and agriculture products. We are well-positioned to provide the consensus views of commercial end users of derivatives, and my views today represent the collective view of the CMC membership. Our members depend on efficient and competitive functioning of U.S. futures exchanges, and we support well-regulated markets as long as the regulations are reasonable. As you seek to reauthorize the CFTC, we would like to emphasize several points, starting with this. Anytime that we change regulations that affect the hedging mechanism, that's going to introduce risk into the system that's going to have to be priced, and that's going to be a negative impact on both producers and consumers, and everything in between. So to help inform you as you reauthorize, I want to offer a few thoughts and comments about our end-user concerns. My written statement goes into a lot of details about protection of customer collateral, but I want to spend my time focusing on our end-user concerns. As Mr. Cordis says, we've got a lot of concerns about these Part 1.35 record-keeping requirements. As the CFTC was going through the rulemaking process, CMC was very engaged on it. We wanted to make sure that this expansion would not require non-clearing members of a DCM to have to record phone calls related to physical commodity purchases and sales. Just going to a straight example, we didn't want grain companies to have exchange memberships to have to record phone calls to farmers. Well, we won that battle, but we lost the bigger war because we weren't paying close attention to the fine print. The CFTC's final rule quietly inserted some additional language that previously existed only in a guidance document that significantly expanded the scope of what they consider to be an electronic document. And they basically expanded to cover everything except oral conversations. It includes text messaging, instant messaging, email, and any other electronic communication. The cost of maintaining all this stuff is quite substantial, and particularly trying to do it in a searchable format as the CFTC has requested, to the extent that's even technically feasible. In our case, we have totally instructed all of our grain locations, they're not to use any kind of instant messaging at all right now. We have forced them back to the phones. So that's probably the exact opposite of what this rule is supposed to do. Let me give you, you know, just to expand on what Mr. Cordis says, if you have a grain elevator with 100 locations, on any given day, they're buying and selling grain all over the country, they're not doing futures for each individual sale, they look at their net exposure, and then that's what they go to the exchange with. So, you know, under the CFTC's rule, are we going to record all those phone calls when you have to get a tenuous connection to what the futures layoff is anyway? It doesn't seem to be a very good public policy for us, especially since they're telling us we don't have to record phone calls, but you have to do everything else. Let's face it, text messaging and other kinds of electronic communications have largely replaced phone calls today in the 21st century. So if the policy is not to record phone calls, we need to be a little more logical about it. Another area that we have some concerns about is bona fide hedging. Congress provided a definition of bona fide hedging within Dodd-Frank that the CFTC is unnecessarily narrowed. They've come up with at least five different definitions in various rules, and that creates a lot of confusion, and it could disrupt legitimate risk mitigation practices. We certainly are very interested in working with you to try and get this whole notion of bona fide hedging steered back in the right direction. As Mr. Cordis also said, we also have concerns about the scope of the swap dealer definition. We believe that the final rule defining who must register was the Dodd-Frank Act, that was largely a category that was designed for large financial institutions. But we believe the way it's been implemented, it's altering trading activity between commercial market participants, and it's pushing more swap activity into the large dealer banks, which is exactly the opposite of what Dodd-Frank wanted to do. And commercial participants are curtailing their trading activities for fear of having to get caught up in that definition of what a swap dealer is, because they can't comply with the requirements. We've got some other concerns, too, I'll just briefly mention them. We have some concerns about historical swap reporting, the real-time reporting rule as it relates to especially trading in illiquid months, position limits, particularly aggregation, and lastly, residual interest, which was written under the heading of customer protection, but as written, will have a costly and negative impact for our members and the FCMs that we use. With that, I yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you very much, you get extra credit for that later on. Mr. McBayhan, five minutes.
Good morning. Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Scott, and members of the subcommittee, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the perspective of end users on the future of the CFTC. I am Richard McMahon, Vice President of Energy Supply and Finance for the Edison Electric Institute. EEI is the trade association of U.S. shareholder-owned electric utilities. My views are also shared by the Electric Power Supply Association, which is the national trade association for competitive wholesale electric suppliers. The electric power industry is the most capital-intensive industry in the United States, an $840 billion industry. Our members are projected to spend approximately $90 billion per year through 2015 on cleaner generating capacity, environmental and energy efficiency upgrades... generating capacity, environmental and energy efficiency upgrades, as well as smart grid and cybersecurity improvements. Our members are non-financial entities that primarily participate in the physical commodity market and rely on swaps and futures contracts to hedge and mitigate their commercial risk. The goal of our member companies is to provide their customers with reliable electric service at affordable and stable rates. Since wholesale electricity and natural gas historically have been two of the most volatile wholesale commodity groups, our members manage these risks using derivatives for the benefit of their customers. In essence, our members are the quintessential commercial end users of swaps. Our members support the goals of Dodd-Frank. We believe, however, that there are areas where Congress should consider minor adjustments. A new category of market participants, swap dealers, was created by Dodd-Frank. These swap dealers must register with the CFTC and are subject to extensive and burdensome regulatory requirements. The CFTC was directed to exempt entities that engage in a de minimis quantity of swap dealing. The CFTC set this threshold at $8 billion. However, it will be reduced automatically to $3 billion in 2018, absent CFTC action. We oppose such a dramatic reduction in the de minimis threshold without deliberate CFTC action, including a formal rulemaking process that allows stakeholders to provide input on what the appropriate threshold should be. As I previously mentioned, the electric power industry is one of the most capital-intensive industries. Requiring non-financial end users to post margin could tie up much-needed capital that would otherwise be used to invest in local economies and to create jobs. Congress should clarify that it did not intend for margin requirements to apply to non-financial end users. Last year, the U.S. District Court vacated final CFTC rules regarding position limits. These vacated rules defined the term bona fide hedging in a way that was unnecessarily narrow and would have discouraged a significant amount of beneficial risk management activity. This restrictive definition of bona fide hedging transactions could make hedging more difficult and costly and inadvertently increase systemic risk by encouraging end users to leave large portions of their portfolios unhedged. Congress should direct CFTC to allow transactions to be considered bona fide hedging if they meet general requirements, not limited to this enumerated list. The Dodd-Frank Act defines the term "financial entity" as an entity that is predominantly engaged in activities that are in the business of banking or in activities that are financial in nature. Dodd-Frank allows affiliates or subsidiaries of an end user to rely on the end user exemption when entering into a swap on behalf of the end user. However, swaps entered into by end user hedging affiliates who fall under the definition of financial entity cannot take advantage of the end user exemption. Congress should amend the definition of financial entity to ensure that commercial end users are not inadvertently regulated as financial entity. Currently, the CFTC's rules generally treat affiliate swaps like any other swap, so companies must, under certain circumstances, report swaps between majority-owned affiliates and must submit such swaps to clearing unless the end user hedging exemption applies or a complex criteria for interaffiliate clearing exemptions are met. The CFTC has provided some relief in the form of no-action letters. However, these no-action letters are often insufficient and cause uncertainty among end users. EEI supports bipartisan legislation to address the interaffiliate transaction issue. In closing, I would like to thank you and your leadership and the ongoing interest in the issues surrounding the implementation of Dodd-Frank and their impact on commercial end users. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to testify and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Gentlemen, Mr. Monroe for five minutes.
Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Scott, and members of the subcommittee, thank you for convening this hearing. My name is Chris Monroe, and I'm the corporate treasurer of Southwest Airlines. Pleased to be here today to explain how the Dodd-Frank Act has caused a major impact to a commercial end user like Southwest Airlines. Mr. Chairman, as a Texan, you know we began operating in 1971 with three planes serving three Texas cities. Back then, as now, our purpose was to connect people to what's important in their lives with friendly, reliable, and affordable air transportation. Friendly in this context doesn't just mean having nice employees; it means allowing customers to change their flights and check a bag without paying a penalty. Today, Southwest is the nation's largest domestic airline in terms of passengers, and we are the only major airline with a truly national route structure that has not gone through bankruptcy or imposed mass employee layoffs or furloughs or reduced workers' wages or benefits. One key to our unparalleled success has been our ability to hedge fuel through legitimate end-user derivatives purchased in the futures markets. Hedging at Southwest is enterprise risk management, essential in our view, given our $6 billion annual fuel bill. To hedge, we commonly enter into transactions many months or years in advance of needing the physical product. Trading in these illiquid markets allows us to manage our fuel costs, which in turn helps us to keep fares low and maintain large jet flights in the communities we serve. I'm here today to highlight a few issues that have begun to impact these important markets that companies such as Southwest rely on to manage risk. One area we are seeing negative commercial impact is the CFTC's real-time reporting rule. That regulation prescribes the maximum time delay before swap trade data is publicly disseminated. The prescribed time delays may be sufficient for liquid markets, but the timeframes are not sufficient for illiquid markets, which, as I said before, is where Southwest commonly trades. Only a few market participants trade that far out on the curve, which makes contracts highly illiquid, even in contracts that may be liquid in the front month, such as crude oil. Additionally, Southwest has a particularly identifiable trading strategy, a hedging DNA, if you will, which makes us quite visible in the market with few participants. This is particularly harmful. It's my understanding that Dodd-Frank expressly mandated that the identity of legitimate end users like Southwest would be kept confidential, and for good reasons, as will become clear. When a dealer has to report illiquid trades to the market quickly, the dealer is less likely to be able to lay off the risk of that trade in the prescribed time. If the dealer is still holding a large amount of risk when the trade is shown to the public, the dealer can be front-run and, as a result, take a loss on the trade. That increased risk to the dealer will either curtail trades or materially increase the cost of the trade to end users. If an end user like Southwest can no longer access the markets to hedge fuel, it would be contrary to the purposes of the legislation and, in our view, hostile to congressional intent. Since the rule became effective, Southwest is already seeing changes in market behavior and swap pricing. A recent trade cost Southwest an additional 35 basis points in spread. Applying that additional 35 basis points in cost to typical volumes traded by Southwest in illiquid areas of the crude curve and in illiquid products such as jet fuel will add roughly $60 million in annual costs. Following the rules' implementation, Southwest heard from dealers who plainly were aware of our trades that we had entered into that will settle in 2015 and beyond. Southwest does not object to real-time reporting of swap transactions to the CFTC. We support transparency. However, based on the fact that liquidity diminishes further out in time, there is a point where the benefits derived from public reporting do not outweigh the detriment to those who are trading illiquid contracts, as the market participants become easier to identify, ultimately allowing others to take advantage of their market position. In conclusion, it would be fair to say that neither the drafters of Dodd-Frank nor the CFTC officials intended to impede Southwest's ability to hedge our high fuel costs as a legitimate end user. But unfortunately, this has been the result of the real-time reporting rule. I look forward to today's discussion on the issues as well as other issues affecting commercial end users. We also encourage the subcommittee to consider legislative solutions to address the unintended consequences of the real-time reporting rule. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Soto for five minutes.
Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Scott, members of the subcommittee, thank you for inviting me to appear before you today. I'm here on behalf of the American Gas Association's more than 200 local energy companies that deliver clean natural gas throughout the United States. As Ranking Member Scott had indicated earlier at the opening of this hearing, we believe that gas utilities, large and small, pose little or no systemic risk to the nation's financial system. AGA has worked cooperatively with the CFTC and its staff throughout the rulemaking process to implement the Dodd-Frank Act, and we appreciate the magnitude and difficulty of the task. However, from a business perspective, regulatory certainty is essential for planning and compliance. And let me just take the example of the swap definition as an area of uncertainty. What is and what isn't a swap is fundamental to the whole regulatory regime. And yet, throughout the process, there's been an evolution of what transactions fall in and fall out. There was a three-part test for certain forwards that were excluded, and then in the interim final rule, the last discussion on the subject, there was a further seven-part test, and the commission asked for additional comments. They have not yet acted on those comments, and as a result, there is tremendous confusion and disagreement in the energy industry as to which type of gas supply transactions will be subject to the CFTC's regulations. Consequently, some industry counterparties have taken the view that they will treat all of their energy transactions that contain any option or choice for one of the parties as a trade option. Other counterparties are insisting on contract provisions to be included in their contracts to force agreement as to how the transactions should be treated. One of my members has told me that they have entered into routine transactions with multiple counterparties where the different counterparties themselves have conflicting interpretations of what are essentially identical contracts. Uncertainty is hampering business planning and compliance and is disrupting contracting practices in the industry, and it also hampers the CFTC's ability to be an effective market monitor. Therefore, we believe that the CFTC and the industry would benefit greatly from additional administrative processes whereby industry participants could obtain in a timely manner the kind of regulatory certainty they need for planning and compliance and challenge agency action if necessary. In particular, we offer the following three recommendations. First, AGA recommends that Congress amend the Commodity Exchange Act to provide clear and defined procedures for challenging CFTC rules and orders in court, in a United States Court of Appeals. A broad judicial review provision allowing for the direct challenge of CFTC rules and orders would both have a rehabilitative effect on problems with the current process and a prophylactic effect in strengthening the agency's rulemaking process. Second, and relatedly, AGA recommends that Congress provide direct judicial review of jurisdictional disputes between the Commodity Futures Trading Commission and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. For energy end users such as AGA's members, the main source of frustration with the CFTC's implementation of the Dodd-Frank Act has been a lack of regulatory certainty as to whether physical transactions traditionally regulated by FERC would now be subject to CFTC regulation as swaps. Industry participants would greatly benefit by clearly defined scopes of jurisdiction between the two agencies. Third, AGA recommends that Congress require the CFTC to provide better internal administrative processes for interested parties to seek clarity and guidance on agency issues. Under current CFTC rules, there are insufficient avenues available for the public to obtain timely, definitive guidance in the form of a final agency action. As a result, parties have relied on staff action in the form of no-action or exemptive relief, interpretive guidance, and/or interpretations by the General Counsel to obtain necessary clarification of the agency rules. And this is a point I believe that Commissioner Malia had made at yesterday's hearing. AGA believes that the inclusion of administrative process reforms in the CFTC's governing statutes and rules would have a positive impact on the agency's ability to be a responsive and effective regulator, and we would be pleased to provide the committee with specific recommendations at your request. I thank you for the consideration of this testimony and look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Mr. Gelford.
Honorable Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Scott, and distinguished members of the subcommittee, on behalf of the Commodity Market Oversight Coalition, CMOC, we wish to thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today on the matter of the Commodities Futures Trading Commission and to address matters relating to the CFTC's authorities regulating the activities in the commodity markets and the impact of those activities on end users. The Commodity Markets Oversight Coalition, CMOC, is a nonpartisan alliance of organizations that represent commodity-dependent American industries, businesses, end users, and consumers. We are the farmers, truckers, heating oil retailers, mom-and-pop gas station operators, airlines, and others who rely on transparent, functional, and stable commodity markets in which to hedge our operations for the mutual benefits of those who deliver tangible goods to markets and from which we take delivery of tangible goods, as well as for the benefit of the millions of consumers that we serve. Our members rely on functional, transparent, and competitive commodity derivatives markets as a hedging and price discovery tool. As a coalition, we favor government policies that promote stability and confidence in the commodity markets, seek to prevent fraud, manipulation, and excessive speculation, and preserve the interests of bona fide hedgers and American consumers. Since its inception in 2007, our coalition and its member organizations have delivered testimony and written congressional leaders in support of many of the reforms in Dodd-Frank and in legislation prior to Dodd-Frank's enactment. And though while Dodd-Frank was indeed historic legislation, it was not perfect, and Title VII reforms in which we spent the majority of our time were no exception. Even with its imperfections, one cannot say that Dodd-Frank was unnecessary or that the new authorities granted to the CFTC under the Act were inappropriate. In the mid-1990s, the over-the-counter derivatives market had a notional value of between $20 and $25 trillion. Today, the derivatives market's notional value exceeds $600 trillion. But even in the early '90s, there had been episodes of fraud. Bankers Trust, proctoring gamble, Gibson greeting cards. Bankers Trust had defrauded some of its derivatives' customers, and second, there was evidence of manipulation in the markets. Sumitomo Corporation had managed to manipulate the world market in copper, in part using the over-the-counter derivatives markets to disguise its operation and fund them. Later and after the fact, there were other incidents of market manipulation discovered involving Enron, electricity markets, Amaranth and natural gas, BP and propane, and crude When accepting the John F. Kennedy Profiles of Courage Award in 2009, former CFTC Chair Brooksley Born stated, "Special interests in the financial services industry are beginning to advocate a return to business as usual and to argue against the need for any serious reform. We have to muster the political will to overcome these special interests. If we fail now to take the remedial steps to close the regulatory gaps, we will be haunted by our failure for years to come." We, too, express concerns about what Dodd-Frank has done in our markets and certainly what it has had for impacts on our companies and our customers. That, however, doesn't mean we should do nothing, but it does mean that there are things that we should address, and we look forward to working with the committee in the following areas that we would recommend specific attention be given. Number one is manipulation and excessive speculation. The subcommittee should examine the efficacy of the October 18, 2011 position limits rule. As we all know, the federal court remanded that back to the agency last year because there was a conflict between two different parts of the statute with regard to whether or not position limits could be in effect immediately or whether position limits were subject to an appropriate and necessary clause. The federal court remanded it back to the agency in order to go back in touchstone. We need to clarify that. Number two, our index funds. The subcommittee should inquire within the CFTC of its progress in implementing the recommendations of the bipartisan PSI staff report and addressing end user concerns over index fund speculation. High-frequency trading, we urge the committee to investigate the role of high-frequency trading and other potentially harmful or disruptive new trends in commodity markets and determine whether or not additional CFTC authority is required to deal with the potential impacts of high-frequency trading. Penalties, we believe the subcommittee should consider extending the statute of limitations for the CFTC from its present five years to a minimum of 10 years for its investigations. Bankruptcy protections in light of MF Global and Peregrine, we would like to work with the committee, rather, on the extension of the Securities Investor Protection Act to clients. The trade option exemption is one that impacts a number of our members because it has a limitation of a $10 million net worth requirement with a separate $1 million net worth requirement for bona fide hedgers, and frequently, our companies are small enough so they fall below that threshold. We would like to see that changed so that we continue to have access to engage in trades. Energy and Environmental Markets Advisory Committee was created in 2008, yet it hasn't met since 2009. We think the CFTC would benefit greatly by the advice of those who are actually in the industry. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time and attention and be happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Chairman, remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival, and I appreciate members' understanding. We've got six panel members. We will do a second round of questioning if possible, and I would ask the members' indulgence that if you ask a question with precious little time on the clock, you're not going to get all six members of the panel to answer your question. So we'll probably give you one panel member, and then if that issue is reported to you, you'll stick around for a second round and go back at it at that point in time. So with that, I'll recognize ourselves for five minutes. Gentlemen, thank you for coming here today and presenting this to us. As I mentioned to a couple earlier, this is the detailed phase of what we need to be doing. Most of the time, members of Congress in these hearings stick to the 10,000-foot level, but we need to get into the weeds with respect to this reauthorization, and if there are specific details with respect to the laws itself, now's the time to get those in front of us as a part of that. Mr. Cordis, as you look at the proposed rules on residual interest and increased margin accounts for FCMs, can you distinguish how, and I know the CFTC is relooking at that, but it seems to me that, in a prefaced, obviously leading question, the SRO has done a pretty good job of setting up a daily confirmation process for cash balances for segregated accounts. Is there additional regulation needed, or would that be enough in this regard to protect and avoid forcing your members? and avoid forcing your members to put more money up, have more money at risk, quite frankly, in those segregated accounts? Or is the current SRO process adequate to protect in this regard?
Thank you, Congressman Chairman. The current legislation that's put in place, or I should say the rules that are there, currently today, we have to track and report all of our segregated funds and report that in. But then it's also, the SRO has the ability to electronically look at where all those accounts are, so there's full transparency where that is today, and that's a big change from where it was probably about a year ago. They have access to real-time reporting on that, knowing what that is. If the change on the residual interest doesn't come to be, probably what we're going to see is either the FCM's going to have to put up additional capital on the balance sheet or, more likely, we're going to ask our customers to pre-fund their margin accounts additionally. It could increase their margin requirements by almost double if that happens.
I guess the question was, though, given, is that enough control already? Should we, well, let me ask, Mr. Monroe, thank you for quantifying specifically an impact. One of the things that we do on the front end of these regulatory processes, people predict things that are bad, things are going to happen, and it's hard to quantify. Now that we've got something in place where you guys have experienced an opportunity to have your costs actually increased, was the being identified within the market as to who you were, was that a one-time occurrence, or you're seeing it regularly now?
No, Mr. Chairman, that actually has continued to happen, and in fact, happened again in a trade that we did last week that was for a settlement or a contract that would settle in 2014. So our concern was, you know, these low liquidity areas of the market, 2015, 2016, and beyond, and we actually were identified in a 2014 trade.
And the $60 million that you said, was that an annualized cost, or was that on that one trade?
No, that would be an annualized cost, looking at the volume that we typically do in that, in those illiquid areas.
Can the regulatory scheme be such that bifurcate the real-time reporting? If you've got a certain number, beyond a certain number of months on the contract, it would fall into one set of rules, the near-term contracts fall into different, is that too complex to regulate? What's the solution for your out-month trades that you're being identified on?
I think there really needs to be a liquidity test, and we are working with staff at the CFTC, and we've had numerous meetings with them on this issue, trying to get some interpretive guidance to come from the CFTC on this issue. And we feel like there is a solution that recognizes that liquidity narrows as you go out on the curve, and it may be on an early month in something like jet fuel, but that there is some public benefit, there's certainly public benefit in the early months where price discovery is critical. But out in 2017, there is no public benefit, and in fact, we're basically handing inside information to nefarious folks.
I got you. Mr. Soto, on the time left, you mentioned judicial review of CFTC. Would you flush that out a little bit for us?
Currently, the Commodity Exchange Act enables judicial review, direct judicial review into U.S. Court of Appeals for very limited provisions, certain transactions and approvals. What we're seeking is a broad ability to go before U.S. Court of Appeals for any rulemaking or order issued by the commission. At present, you have to first go to federal district court, seek a summary judgment, and then appeal that to the U.S. Court of Appeals to get an answer on the rulemaking, and that's a cumbersome and wasteful process.
All right, thank you. Mr. Scott, for five minutes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask this question, get a response from each of you on the panel for this. It's been since 2008 since the CFTC has had reauthorization, budget appropriations. That was before the financial crisis. That was before the Wall Street meltdown, before the derivatives regulations responsibilities. But recently, the House Appropriations Committee reported an appropriations bill that reduced the funding of the CFTC by more than $10 million, even though Chairman Kinsler warned in his testimony to the committee that even at the current spending levels, with sequestration to commission, would face forloes and staff losses. So I'd like to get each of you to respond to three questions, yes or no, basically. Do you believe that the funds of the CFTC as proposed by the House Appropriations Committee are at an adequate level, starting here? I mean, basically, yes or no. Chairman will knock me down if I don't get all these in in five minutes.
I would say, from our perspective, we only see one piece of what they're doing. I think they could prioritize what they do. I'm not sure if I know that's a yes or a no without having more details.
Mr. Scott?
I'd give you the same answer as Mr. Cordes. Without more details, I can't tell you whether that's going to be enough or not.
I'd have to say the same. I really have not looked at the global, you know, issues around budgets, so I can't give you a good answer to that. I'm apologize.
But given the fact that the CFTC, in much of your testimony, you're asking them to do more, they're faced with budget crunch, they're losing staff, forloes, they've got Dodd-Frank Title VII to implement, you're there, their workload has been increased by over 400%. Isn't that not enough information for you? Can we go on, Mr. Monroe? What do you think?
Yeah, I'm not in a position to comment on that either.
Mr. Soto?
Let me say, I don't think the amount is as important as what the agency does with the funds that they're given. We hope that they will become a more effective and responsive regulator with the funds that they have.
Mr. Guilford?
Thank you for the question. CFTC staff today is approximately 9% larger than it was 20 years ago, even though the notional value of the derivatives market over which it has jurisdiction is increased by over 30 times.
But could you give me a yes or no?
And the question was, is the House Appropriations Mark sufficient in order to fund the agency? The answer is no.
Good. Okay, now, secondly, do you believe that the reduced funding that they have from the Appropriations Committee hurts the commission's ability to listen, to evaluate, and to do all the matters, to regulate, to give guidance on all the range that they're doing regarding its rulemaking? Yes or no?
And even in some instances, not being able to hire experts in order to carry out its responsibilities now.
Precisely. Thank you. Yes or no?
Again, it's what they do with the money that they have, and we hope they become more efficient.
All right, yes.
I would echo Mr. Soto on that.
Same thing.
We've always been able to meet with the staff and commissioners and had no issue with difficulty there.
Yes, sir.
I'd echo that response. We don't have any trouble getting the audience with the commission when we need to. And also point out that House Appropriations reported level is one step in the process. That isn't the amount that's actually going to be ultimately decided on.
Even with an increase in the workload? Yes, sir, Mr.? Your point, Ms. Cordes, on that question?
I would say, from our perspective, the part of the industry we operate in, and we've had access to what we need, I would say it's a matter of what you do with those resources, how you prioritize.
All right, finally, my final point on the yes or no here is, do you believe, given the agency's responsibilities and growing, that they need resources in an amount that's greater than the $205 million it received in 2013? In other words, do you think they need more money to cut the forloes, to do the staff, to be able to listen, to be able to do the job that they need to do with the increased workload that they have in this very complex area?
Well, once again, I'm not an expert in knowing what that whole budget is. I would just say, look at what the priorities are.
All right, Mr.?
I would echo that response, but I want to go just one level deeper. One thing you said earlier is that you heard a lot of testimony today about us asking them to do more. I actually am, we have a lot of areas where we would like them to do less. We believe, you know, Dodd-Frank was about swap regulation, and they are creating a lot of solutions that are in search of problems in the future space. We think that they could do some prioritizing.
Write down very quickly, please, yes or no?
Again, from the end-user perspective, I think we would hope for less regulation on the end-user side.
I think we're fine with.
All right, Mr. Guilford?
Commissioner O'Malley, yesterday, talked about information resources that he needs. Our point is that the data that is being developed right now, given the uncertainty of the market, is inconsistent, it's incomplete, so those technology resources are not put to the most effective use, given where the regulatory regime is right.
I just want to know if you think they need to get more money to hire the staff that they need to do the job?
If they got more money, the data there is incomplete and inconsistent, and it would be wasted.
Mr. Guilford?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I got one, yes.
Gentlemen, yield's back. Mr. Austin Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And gentlemen, thanks for being here today and helping us with this issue. I actually majored in risk management and have my Series VII, so I feel some of your And I listened yesterday as the gentleman with the CFTC talked about their difficulty and even getting to a common definition with the SEC over the word "person." And it seems to me that when we have two regulatory agencies essentially regulating the same field, that when they can't agree on what the definition of the word "person" is, then we're creating a situation where you may be in compliance with one regulatory agency and out of compliance with another, and it simply depends on which one may be auditing you at the time as to whether or not you're in compliance or out of compliance. But you talked about pricing, most of you talked about pricing, and you talked about compliance. And I know, Mr. Monroe, you talked about the $60 million in additional cost. I assume that that cost will either be reflected on your bottom line as a reduction in profits, or it will be reflected in the price of a ticket to travel on Southwest Airlines. And that's one of the things that I think sometimes gets lost in this debate as we talk about complex financial issues, is that the more we raise the cost to the end-user, in my situation, talking about farmers in particular, you increase the cost of a grain farmer, the price is, that cost is borne by the person every time they buy a box of cereal. In the end, it goes down to the consumer that purchases the last product. So, Mr. Cordes, you outlined some of the costs that are being incurred by end-users in complying with the new Dodd-Frank Act. And could you be more specific, more specific in some of the measures that the co-ops generally are having to take to address the new rules?
Yes, thank you, Congressman. In our particular situation, I'm just talking for our licensed FCM group, we've got a staff of roughly about 40 individuals. We've had one person that's been primarily on compliance. We've now ramped that up where it's taking two body full equivalents to do those kind of things, so it's those areas. It's increased compliance around record-keeping, record-retention, auditing amongst our individuals, training, that kind of thing. I would also say, though, that under Dodd-Frank now, it's even rolled out farther into the parent company, into the cash and physical transactions. We're now having to build out a full compliance group that not only looks at all the other compliance issues, but now things that spill over from Dodd-Frank that start to affect the end-user, that normally they would look at as normal transactions in commerce around cash and physical transactions. I'm wondering, does this fit into the scope of new regulation?
And would you agree that that increased cost, in the end, is borne by the consumer that purchases the product?
Yeah, ultimately, in the end, as the market equalizes itself out, those costs will be passed on at some point.
Mr. Soto, you're in the energy business, is that correct?
Yes.
And the cost of energy is reflected in everything that we purchase in this country. The cost of manufacturing, energy cost being too high can send manufacturing jobs overseas, and the cost of transporting a product, virtually everything that we purchase at some point or another gets to a store by a truck, so the cost of that energy is obviously reflected in the price. Could you speak to the potential increase in cost to the energy consumer with the increased rules and regulations based on the end-users in your industry?
Thank you, Congressman. To be honest, many factors can affect the price of natural gas. Right now, natural gas consumers are enjoying the benefits of tremendously abundant natural gas resources in this country that's producing relatively low and stable natural gas prices for consumers. But having said that, and the concern that I would raise is that through the increased transaction costs associated with the hedging programs, the resources that utilities have to develop to manage these hedging costs, that all makes it more expensive to manage the price volatility for consumers, and that gets passed on to consumers. But more importantly, the wholesale natural gas market in this country has been tremendously competitive, innovative, creative, all redounding to the benefit of customers, but prices of the last decade notwithstanding, it is really a treasure of this nation. And the problem that I would see is if that market becomes less efficient, less competitive, because the transacting parties are concerned that their physical transaction might be considered a swap, we lose something tremendously.
Mr. Chairman, I'm out of time, but gentlemen, thank you for your testimony.
Gentlemen, yield's back. Thank you. Gloria, Pete, for five minutes.
Thank you. With respect to the issue of what is or is not in a price, is there a way to break that down? I mean, there's a, as you indicated, Mr. Soto, there's a number of factors that go into any particular price. I'm sure that's true in any industry, whether you're talking about giving somebody a raise, whether it's a line employee or whether it's an executive, you know, the market prices for so many things. I mean, all of that impacts, and ultimately, the consumer pays for all of that. Is that not accurate?
That is correct, and if there are fewer counterparties willing to trade and if the markets become less liquid, the product offerings are less innovative, less creative, then that just costs more to the consumer.
I'm curious, though, as to, in terms of the, is there a way to allocate cost per factor? I mean, you decided to give people x-rayed a return on their investment, so that's passed on, or you decided to, you know, or the price of one thing or another. And I'm just talking about industry. I mean, for the airlines, it would be, it would be the same. I mean, every cost, ultimately, as a businessman, I mean, I was in the restaurant business, my family was in the restaurant business for a long time, and ultimately, your costs are always passed on. I mean, when the price of any of the food that you're serving goes up, that price is ultimately reflected on the prices in your menu.
The transaction costs associated with the uncertainty in the contracting market, that's probably more easy to quantify and to track. The impacts of illiquidity and the less innovative product offerings, that's probably more difficult to quantify.
So in terms of what a, you know, whether the, there are more rules and regulations or those kinds of things, is there a way to allocate how much that is costing you? I mean, is that, do the industry specifically break that down by that particular, is there a code? I mean, in government, apparently, everybody talks about, you know, it has to be coded right. Is there a code for, you know, this is because of these rules, we have to code this differently, and so we can track how much the cost is?
We have not made that analysis.
Do any of you do that? Can any of you break that down, any of the industries, break that down and code it differently so that you can tell what is allocated to any change in the regulations?
I don't know that we necessarily code an expense in a certain way because of an additional regulation, but I would say, as I spoke to in my testimony, that we view it as enterprise risk management, and if the markets literally are taken away from us, then there is risk to the enterprise, and not to overstate that issue, but a fuel price spike has been the undoing of.
Right, several lifetimes, yes, right. So with respect to the issue of agencies, though, and one of the interesting things to me is when an agency in limited, and, you know, granted, it probably doesn't happen that often, but when there is a rule that either is repealed or is changed so that it becomes more efficient, you know, I find it interesting, for example, that we always talk about how this stuff costs more and costs more and costs more, and it raises the price, but it doesn't necessarily ever lower prices. And I mean, I know in the restaurant business, as an example, that, you know, when the price of a staple went up and your price went up, and then when people got used to paying the higher price, and then the price went back down again, the lower price wasn't always necessarily reflected in your menu prices. And so how do you balance that with respect to allocating, you know, giving credit where credit is due? Is there an opportunity to do that? If they make good decisions, I mean, yes, sir. Well, the utility industry is a little bit different than that. It's a cost-of-service industry, it's rate-regulated at the retail level, and compliance costs are something that's part of rates, so that's passed through to customers. We have not seen so far any example of the Dodd-Frank Act is actually lowering costs or seeing any of the costs lowered, and we were, our hope going in was that the end-user exemption was going to be a relatively clean and broad exemption.
clean and broad exemption that would, you know, really relieve us from a lot of the regulatory burden, but that, that is not the case. And there's a lot of uncertainty around things such as posting margin, for example. You know, utilities are very creditworthy, and therefore, they don't, and many of their swaps don't need to post margin. Having to do that would tie up a lot of capital, and there would be a lot of costs associated with that. So, there's, that kind of uncertainty hasn't really been fully quantified yet, but ultimately, those costs are borne by the ratepayers.
Thank you.
And I would just point out, I'm, we're particularly proud to, to pass through lower costs to our customers and gain market share, so we're happy to do that.
I fly out regularly, so absolutely.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, time is expired. Dr. Bennercheck, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all so much for coming here this morning. I'm a surgeon, and I don't pretend to have a lot of knowledge about the commodities market, but I'm learning fast since I got on this committee. I have a couple of questions that, on some of the, the things here. Can you explain to me more about this, these no-action letters? Maybe, Mr. Cordes, you know, the, the no-action letter that, that the CFTC puts out, and apparently, there's some ambiguity if this, if these letters have any basis in law, and it may create uncertainty. Could you just go through that a little bit for me, please?
Yeah, the simplest way I can explain that for you, Congressman, is typically, there's rules and regulations, and if you can state your case that it's economically not feasible, or physically impossible to perform under those things, you can petition the CFTC and say, here's the situation, can we get some relief? And depending upon the situation, they might issue a no-action letter, or they may not. If they do issue a no-action letter, then basically, it's given you relief from having to comply with that particular regulation in your situation.
And does that ever get overturned, then? That you can have like another jeopardy once you, the deadline's been passed?
I'm not aware of that, because typically, the CFTC follows through with that. But in my testimony, I gave the example around this phone recording, and there's some issues there that we'll be talking to the commission about.
Another question I have.
Congressman, may I, may I have to answer that question?
Sure.
Mr. O'Malley, yesterday, in his testimony, said that there were just over 100 no-action letters currently issued by the CFTC, in exactly the way that the previous speaker just addressed. However, 24 of those have no expiration date. So, our concern about those would be with regard to the fact that it isn't only a situation where the agency may not have fully formulated a policy with an issue, may not have finished a rulemaking, may not have extended rulemaking far enough or collected enough public comment, but it's the extent to which the CFTC relies on no-action letters, simply because it hasn't been able to complete its work.
All right. I have another question about, you know, the, the record keeping. I mean, I, I thought it was pretty amazing that, the way you described the fact that every message would have to be somehow documented and searchable, and you've relied now on basically making phone calls to deal with this. Can you recommend some way of, for the CFTC to do this in a better way? I mean, obviously, you had some pretty strong feelings about it.
Our recommendation would be, let's, let's not extend the notion of what needs to be recorded this far. I mean, you know, the.
What's the, what's the object of, of all that recording? What is, I mean?
Well, I don't know what the object of that recording is. That's our point. We don't, we don't see any real good public policy value of recording.
Is, is there value, you know, to, in oversight, by collecting that, all that data? I mean, I mean, the way you described it, you know, hundreds of transactions going on during a day, and you have to maybe make a hedge position on the sum of your transactions, it doesn't, it seems like it's a little complicated.
From a commercial perspective, we don't see any value in it. I mean, we, when we do it, when we, when we do a purchase or a sale with a producer or, or a, a customer, we do it with a contract, and we maintain all the records necessary to memorialize that transaction. And we don't feel the need to go as far as recording the phone call where we agreed with the farmer to buy his grain. That seems a little excessive to us. We, you know, we keep the records necessary for that, so going beyond that seems.
Mr. Guilford, did you have, do you have a comment on that answer? I mean, I'm trying to figure out why this, you know, they have in this requirement. Can, do you have an answer?
I, I do. And if I could just follow up on the previous answer I gave you just for a second. Three years ago, we recommended to Congress that.
Well, I, I'd like to stay on the, on the, I only got a certain amount of time.
Okay.
So, could you answer the question I asked you?
Yes.
What is your opinion of this?
Of course. We worked a very long time in Title VII, trying to draw distinctions between legitimate hedgers and non-legitimate hedgers, commercial versus non-commercial market participants. What we attempted to do in, in carrying out that work, Congressman, was to make sure, as much as we could, and we may not have been perfect in doing it, that all of the industries and more that are represented on this panel today.
Well, I'm trying to find out the value of, of the.
I'm getting to that.
Yeah, but I don't have much time.
We had nothing to do with the financial crisis. So, what the agency has done is cast a very wide net that encompasses everyone, even though we had nothing to do with the financial crisis, in an attempt to determine the extent to which there may be systemic risk or other threats posed to the financial system, none of which arise from the people you're looking at today. So, in point of fact, a lot of the, the information is being, it may not be useful.
Unfortunately, you talked for, well, a minute, but didn't answer the question.
Thank you, gentlemen. We've been joined by the breaking minute member, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Peterson, you, Mr. Maloney, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, all.
My question relates to the, to the CFTC's $8 billion de minimis level. I'd like to get your thoughts on that. To anyone who wants to answer.
Well, when, when the de minimis level was established, the CFTC initially set it very low in their proposed rule. There were hundreds of comments sent into the CFTC, several oversight hearings, and ultimately, they settled on the $8 billion number. We felt that was a good number, given the size of the market, and the fact, from the energy perspective, we enter into oftentimes large volumetric trades. And so, to hedge against some of the risks that we need to hedge on fuel and also on power supply, that isn't necessarily a very big number, even though it seems like a large number. We're concerned that if it goes, falls back to $3 billion without any kind of process associated with it, that would come at the wrong time, because we're at the, we're at a trough of a commodity cycle right now. And as, as Andrew mentioned, we're benefiting from low natural gas prices in the $2 to $3 per mm BTU range, for example. But we've seen in the last four or five years, when it's been as high as $10 per mm BTU. So, having that level set at an appropriate level, high enough, will ensure that end users aren't pulled in and regulated as large banks, as swap dealers. So, that's why it was important.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm, I'm interested in hearing from the rest of the panel, but is it fair to say, Mr. McMahon, that you're comfortable, then, with the $8 billion level on an ongoing basis?
We feel the $8 billion number, for now, is a good level, and going forward, it should, it should be looked at in terms of where the overall commodity market is, but that is a good floor and a good level for where it should be.
Is, is there someone who disagrees with that? And would anyone like to comment on the, Mr. Guilford, give you an opportunity to comment on the, on the idea of it dropping to $3 billion?
I agree with the others on the panel who've said that it's a number that needs to be flexible with where the energy markets are. So, a fixed number in time doesn't allow that to happen, and it can disadvantage us as competitors.
How would you best accomplish that, sir?
That's a great question. You're going to have to give us a minute to think about it.
You and I are going to get along great. You just keep saying that, we're going to get along great. But, no, but if, what would the, what would the mechanism, what would you prefer as a mechanism there? Would you leave it to?
Well, the mechanism, as the previous speaker indicated, there have been times when energy markets have been very high, with the $8 billion number.
Well, right, it's not the same in all markets.
Obviously, it, it needs to be able to move with the markets. If it's a fixed number in time, then it's going to put it at a disadvantage unnecessarily so.
Correct. Simply because of the underlying commodity.
We need to fashion a way to be able to allow that number to move along with energy markets. Now, I'm not smart enough here today, Congressman, in order to give you an answer to exactly how we may be able to fashion a solution to that, but I'm confident we can find one.
Got it. And, and in the two minutes I have remaining, I'd like to give you, give you the panel an opportunity to, to comment on the definition of bona fide hedging and where it ended up. You touched on this, Mr. Guilford, so we could start with you if you want. But, but, but I think part of the problem here is that people don't understand that a certain level of speculation does create liquidity in the markets, and, and is actually a very healthy thing. Obviously, it's a Goldilocks problem, and, and I'm curious whether those on the panel view excessive speculation currently as being damage, damaging to the end users, and where you, where you see that balance being struck.
Well, 10 years ago, when, when the markets were dominated about 70% by legitimate market participants and 30% by speculation, we had far less difficulties than today, where that's been flipped. Now, it's about 70% speculation and 30% legitimate market participants. So, A, we share a concern with the rest of the panel with regard to the multiplicity of definitions of bona fide hedgers that needs to be clarified, and we need to get all on the same page. Number two, we do believe that speculation, in some cases, and we would argue that those may have been evident in the past few years, damages our ability to be competitors in the marketplace and artificially inflates prices to consumers. Mr. Soto.
As the commissioners mentioned yesterday, there are several definitions of the bona fide hedge exemption. We were fine with the definition as it was applied and the end user exception. We were fine with the, as it was, as part of the major swap participant definition. We have concerns about a much narrower definition as it applies to the position limits rule, and we think when the CFTC does come back on the position limits, they really need to fix that.
I would just say that the markets seem to be running very efficiently now, and we're generally comfortable with, with what you're describing as a Goldilocks scenario. And we, we're always concerned about anything that threatens liquidity.
And from the utility perspective, again, we have large and oftentimes customized transactions, so this narrow enumerated list is, is very limiting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, yield back, thank you. Chris Collins for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all of the participants today, and I'm really interested in following up a little bit on the end user exception, certainly to the clearing requirements. And I guess would ask each of you, is the definition clear enough? You'd think it would be black and white, you're an end user, or you're not, or are you finding situations where there is a gray area? And then, how are you treating that gray area to know whether a particular company might be considered an end user for the exceptions or not?
I would say, from our perspective, from NCFC, is we're working with the commission to get better clarity on that. I think we're getting much better facts on that. There's still some confusion out in the marketplace on how that should be treated on different swap dealers, that you might work with to lay off some of that risk as an end user. It's got a ways to go, but we're getting better.
Ditto his answer, that's exactly where we are.
I, I think Chairman Gensler described the Title VII and Dodd-Frank as a mosaic, and indeed, it is. There are a lot of overlapping rules and requirements. It's very, very intricate, and our concern, again, on things such as the margin requirement. And one of the advantages of being an end user is that you're exempt from margin, or you should be. But there's possibilities, the way the rules interact, that you could be subject to margin. So, I think it's those sorts of issues that need to be clarified, to make sure that it's a robust end user exemption.
Yes, I, I would echo that concern, and we also have a concern about being able to post non-cash collateral. We're, we're unique in the fact that we post aircraft as collateral for, for our hedges, and so we want to be able to continue to do that as well, and that, that is potentially threatened.
Same from Richard and Mr. Monroe, that non-cash collateral, the margin and capital requirements for uncleared swaps, that's something that not only the CFTC, but the other prudential regulators need to work out.
We currently don't have an issue with the end user definition.
Thank you. Now, as you move forward, and clearly, you're looking for clarification from the CFTC, have any of you experienced the frustration of the no-action letters? And are those shared amongst all of you, where at least you're getting input from each other's questions?
We have not requested one yet specifically for ourselves going through, so we'll learn more of the process as we go along. I know they're public information after they're issued. How much collaborative effort going in upfront, I'm not aware of.
From CMC's perspective, we've, we've asked for relief in, in several instances, but, you know, generally, overall, it is very frustrating. We've got a, a lot of final rules out there, and no-action letters are really basically an acknowledgement that no one can comply with the rule, either because of timelines or because of other substantive issues. So, it's, it's very hard to keep track of. You've got a code of federal regulations to say one thing, and then you've got a stack of letters that tell you, never mind. But very difficult to keep on top of.
I would agree that conflicting and overlapping issue is very important. I would also say that in some cases, for example, under interaffilia transactions, there is, there are no-action letters out there, but sometimes the guidance is either insufficient, or the facts don't line up exactly with, with the, with the particular cases. So, it's, it's difficult.
We have not had any experience with a no-action letter, but we have not found relief from this real-time reporting rule after several visits and lots of positive feedback, and yet, we still have not seen any, any interpretive guidance that would, that would fix that issue.
There's a part of the agency's administrative process that really needs to be strengthened, and that is the, the finalization of, of clear definitive rules that the industry understands and how to comply with them. And that has to come at the commissioner level, that there has to be final agency actions that they, that everyone understands in the industry what their compliance obligations are. In the absence of that, we have no choice but to go to the staff and say, don't enforce these rules that are uncertain in a way that, that, that we don't know how to comply with them. And I, I think working with staff has been, I mean, they've been helpful in trying to understand the industry concerns and providing the relief that, that they think is necessary, but it's indicative of a, a process where the commissioners themselves are not making the decisions they need to make to give the industry certainty.
We recommended to Congress three years ago that the Congress codify the process of the issuance of no-action letters. We recommend that to you again in this reauthorization process. Be happy to work with you on that.
Well, thank you all for your comments. The time has run out. Chairman, yield back.
Gentlemen, yield's back. Mr. Costa for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple, a number of questions specifically and generally. Let me begin quickly. Mr. McMahon and Koschwar, in your testimony, you talked about your concerns about the de minimis exemption on swap dealer registration. Do you envision more companies having to register under the current $8 billion level? Do you think that the current de minimis level, APN, is appropriate? Or do you think that Cargill and BP's dealing activity doesn't warrant registration or increased oversight?
Well, I think from the utility perspective, as I said earlier, I think the $8 billion number is appropriate. And I think that was, recognizing, too, that, that number was formulated when we were in the midst of a trough in the commodity cycle, very low commodity prices. That number should be a reflection of where the commodity prices are, where the overall scale and size of the derivatives and swaps market is. And we think the number is appropriate. If the number went down, yes, you would see, I think, unintentionally, end users who use these products to hedge commercial risk being pulled in and regulated like banks.
And I don't, Mr. Costa, if you wanted to speak, can you give us a sense how many more non-financial companies would have to register swap dealers? As you may know, I was involved in that effort last year with public utilities in California that were included under this, and I thought was unfairly impacted. Can you, you comment?
And thank you for your efforts, Congressman. Yeah, I think that we have not done sort of a sensitivity analysis, looking as, you know, at the different levels and how many companies would be brought in. But I can tell you that there are lots of examples where we're using swaps and commodities to hedge significant volumetric risk. For example, the provider of a life resort obligation that many utilities have in competitive markets, and they need to hedge that risk in the event that it needs to be covered. So, I think that, you know, and these are large numbers. So, I think that having, setting it at an appropriate level, and $8 billion is that level.
And you also said in your testimony about amending the definition of financial entity, or financial entities that are not inadvertently regulated. As we know, we have a number of financial institutions that can and often do own warehouses, other facilities, they store physical commodities. How would you talk about changing the definition of Dodd-Frank under that definitional category?
Well, we want to make sure that commercial end users or affiliates of commercial end users are specifically excluded from that definition. In many cases, because of codes of conduct and regulatory constructs, again, our industry is heavily regulated already at the federal and state level.
How do you do that relief without opening up a loophole that you could drive a Mack truck through?
I think, I think you just limit the exception to commercial end users, those that are using these products to, to hedge commercial risk, and specifically exclude banks, hedge funds, and everybody of that ilk. So, I mean, that's what our argument is, because oftentimes, we have these subsidiaries set up within holding companies to do the financial trading for the, for the rest of the family.
Mr. Costa, do you have any different comments about this quickly? Because I want to move on to another question.
Just to add a little bit to, to what he said about the, the owning the stuff, you know, we, we acknowledge that, that the issue is, is out there, and it's something for the prudential regulator, the Federal Reserve is, is looking at closely whether banks can own this stuff. But, you know, one of the things that CMC would observe is that regardless of, of what the Fed does in terms of allowing banks in or out of this stuff, if there's a demand for exposure to commodities, that demand.
No, no, I have no doubt. I mean, the creativity of folks out there is unabound, it seems to me, which is part of the problem. Mr. Goford, your testimony comments about how the Federal Reserve is reportedly reconsidering its decision to allow banks to play heavily in the physical commodity markets. I mean, traditionally, you know what that role's been played. Can you expand on what role you think the banks may play in these markets?
I don't think they should be allowed to play--
At all.
--in these markets. No, I don't.
Okay. And so, I'm not so sure I don't agree with you. The whole panel, you may know that Germany unilaterally imposed new rules over high-frequency traders, including registration requirements. I hope you're aware of that. We're working with them on a host of efforts, on a new trade deal, on financial regulatory non-tariff barrier efforts. Are you, what are your thoughts about what the commission should be doing in this area? They're looking at greater oversight on these traders. Should Congress include something about high-frequency traders? Quickly.
From CMC's perspective, I don't know that Congress needs to do anything about it. It's high-frequency trading. I think we need to make sure we distinguish between looking at the technology, because technology is a good thing. It's the trading strategies. I mean, it's, if there's, if you're not supposed to be able to spoof if you're doing a manual trading, you shouldn't be able to spoof if you're electronically trading or high-frequency trading either.
Chairman, your time has expired. Mr. Nagabhar for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for having this important hearing. Mr. Monroe, you mentioned in your testimony that sometimes when, or you, specific trades, you talked about where you are in the marketplace, and market participants could say, oh, Southwest is in the market today. Is that a one-time occurrence, or has your DNA been kind of discovered out there and so on a regular basis that people know it's, that's a Southwest transaction, and they're trying to hedge or?
Yeah. Well, thank you for that question, Congressman. Well, that, it happened the day, we had a trade the day before the database, the website came up, and a trade the day after, and we were, and the emails came and the phone calls came immediately. And then we were quiet for trading for a while. We don't trade every day. We're an end user. We're hedging our risk. And then when we came back into the market, again, we were discovered again. So it's a, we have a specific footprint that we leave. We trade in high volume. We trade in certain, with certain ways, and our, especially those who have traded with us before, they, and if we're not trading with them on that particular day, they know that that's us.
So do you think that, in fact, that that's occurring, is that negatively impacting Southwest Airlines, do you think?
Well, certainly, it's a competitive issue. Typically, we wouldn't have to disclose our hedging positions until the SEC required at the end of a quarter, which is fine, but to have that reported the moment that it happens is a competitive issue. And then there's the concern about the actual swap price rising or the spread arising on us.
So is there anything that could be done to give you that anonymity that you need? I mean, what would be the fix for that?
So I think there is a liquidity test that's needed, and we feel like that that liquidity test probably prescribes that the real-time reporting still continues to be, need to be done to the public in the near close-in months where price discovery is important. But in these illiquid areas, the delay can be as much as 30 days. At least that 30 days gives our counterparty the opportunity to come out of those positions. And we do believe in real-time reporting to the CFTC. That should happen. It's just to the public. There's no public benefit to a 2017 crude oil trade being posted within 15 minutes.
So you're saying that those far-out contracts really don't affect the near-term cash markets?
Yeah, and that's typically, and that's typically, just to your earlier question, that's typically where we're seen, where we're recognized as hedging. If I'm hedging in the next few months, they wouldn't see me there. There's too much liquidity. It's where there's not enough liquidity, and there's clearly a large animal in the room. That's us, and they know it's us.
And what would the disallowance of non-cash collateral as margin, how would that impact Southwest Airlines?
Well, that would impact us very negatively. We, again, I mentioned earlier, we use aircraft for collateral, and that helps us to lower our cost of capital rather than have to go out and borrow cash to post it as collateral. We have billions of dollars' worth of unencumbered aircraft that we're very proud of, and we use those in these markets.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, one of the things I think that we keep hearing in, whether it's this panel of end users or when I'm in the 19th Congressional District of Texas, is that people that are using financial services, whether it's hedging or other financial services, is with Dodd-Frank and CFTC rules and all of these things, is that it's creating a huge amount of uncertainty. And that uncertainty is playing out in how companies are conducting their businesses. Mr. Cortez, would you say that that's impacting, I think about grain dealers or grain elevators in Texas. We may make it difficult where they just quit, you know, providing hedging opportunities. What would that do to the, where would their customers then go for that service?
Yeah, I think I can provide you a little bit of example. If you think back to 2008, when the grain markets were moving quite a bit higher, we had increased margin requirements that come into the marketplace, started putting a lot of stress on the working capital that a lot of these grain dealers had. Some of them got stretched to the point where they just had to quit buying grain. They said, I cannot physically handle this anymore. So what happens then is the farmer is faced with, where's an outlet? I like these prices, but how can I lock it in? One, they'd have to start financing themselves to do that, or two, they just have to wait. And we saw some of them waited, so there's some opportunity that's missed there. So that furthers into today's discussion around some of these potential changes around residual interest, some of these things. If we're going to increase the working capital needs, you're probably going to see some of these firms that'll be stretched to the point where they're saying, I can't continue to buy grain, or maybe I need to get out of business or merge with somebody else, so then it limits the choices that the farmer ultimately sees.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, your time has expired. Mr. Vargas for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you for the opportunity to give me, to ask some questions. I too would like to thank all the witnesses for being here. It sounded like some of you that you listened to the testimony yesterday from the two commissioners. So a question was asked of them in two different ways. What is the thing that keeps you up at night? Or what is the thing, and you can't say my three-year-old, that's been used, but what is, that was yours, that's true. But what is the, what is the thing that worries you the most? I mean, I think we would all agree with the goal of Dodd, the primary goals of Dodd-Frank, protecting the financial system against systemic risk and increasing transparency in the derivatives market, but what is it that worries you the most? Yes, sir, Mr. Soto. Since my mother's maiden name is Mr. Soto, why don't we go to you first, sir?
What worries my members is getting that phone call from CFTC enforcement staff that they've done something wrong. Despite their best efforts in trying to comply with difficult-to-understand rules, they still, the staff thinks that they've done something wrong. And I have seen federal agencies, not the CFTC, but penalize industry participants millions of dollars for misclassifying their transactions in a way that results in a reporting violation. And so, I mean, those concerns are real. So when they come to their association, their National Trade Association, and say what can be done, what keeps me up at night is, how do I get a straight answer from the agency? How do I get a final rule that is well-defined, clearly sets out what the compliance obligation? So our members know how to do business planning and compliance. And that's the source of my frustration. That's what keeps me up at night.
Well, Mr. Koschwar, when reviewing your comments, I think you were saying that there's become, some of these rules, let me see if I can find it exactly. Given that we strongly believe that the CFTC's current trend toward very prescriptive changes is a bad thing, so you almost argue the other way, that there should be some flexibility, that compliance is very costly, but, I mean, that's, I've been trying to listen to understand, because I mean, you want some clear rules, but at the same time, if it's too prescriptive, then the compliance costs go way up, and compliance attorneys like you like that, but it's not a good thing necessarily for the system.
Well, certainty is a good thing, but, you know, over-prescriptiveness is not a good thing. I guess I don't know where the fine line is between certainty and being over-prescriptive. I think the thing, one of the things that CMC members worry about a lot is where certainty in this, in this area of bona fide hedging, you know, you've heard the testimony, a lot of different definitions of it. This is the one where we really see a situation of, this is very ancillary to what Dodd-Frank was trying to do. You know, we're trying to set up a framework for swaps. What was going on in the hedging, you know, in the grain industry or the electricity industry that requires the regulator to come in and topple every, you know, everything we know about bona fide hedging on its head and start over? This is very destabilizing, and it worries us.
Anybody else? Mr. McMahon, sir?
Yeah, I would just add that I think, not falling over one of the tripwires that would have you miscast as a swap dealer. I think that there's so much overlapping and interwovenness between these regulations that there's really a concern that inadvertently somehow you'll be, you'll hit one of these tripwires and be miscast as a dealer and regulated to the extent that banks are, and ultimately, in order to avoid that, you know, anecdotally, we're hearing there are fewer counterparties in the market, and companies are going more physical, which, you know, in a lot of cases, is a more costly way to hedge.
Mr. Cordes?
I would say from our perspective, what keeps us up at night is this, you know, potential one-size-fits-all. You've got different-sized firms. It used to be you had guidance from the CFTC. Now it's pretty much, you must follow this path, this rule, prescriptive down. So what gets us worried at night is, okay, what have we overlooked? What are we missing? And what is it going to cost us to comply with doing all that stuff? Which in a lot of times, a smaller firm, you have a much better view, you see a lot of the things, you don't have layers that things get missed, and it's like, we can do that guidance, but to go through all that other stuff just gets to be a lot of formality that just adds cost.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yield back. Thank you, sir.
Chairman Yostback, Mr. Hudson for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank the witnesses for being here today. Mr. McMahon, I enjoyed visiting with your folks last week, appreciating your testimony where you discuss the implications of reducing the de minimis threshold with deliberate CFTC action. I'm glad you raised this point, because it's something I'm very concerned about, something I'm working about, working with this committee on. As I talked to Commissioner O'Malley yesterday, I understand that the de minimis level is based on a notional value. From his testimony, I gather that works for interest rate swaps, but in commodities markets, rising energy prices could push entities over the threshold by giving them changes in their trading. This seems like a real problem to me. How would you suggest the CFTC address this clearing problem?
And thank you for all your support and efforts on behalf of the industry, Mr. Congressman. I think that the, you know, at the end of the day, our hope is that, that this level, you know, to the extent that they go for a look back, that there is a process put in place where all the stakeholders can come in. I think it does, it should look at the overall scale and scope of the market, but also recognize that it's a very volatile market, particularly with respect to our fuels. Historically, it has been. So, I mean, I think our hope is that it's a deliberative process, it involves rulemaking, that all the stakeholders have an opportunity to participate, and obviously with the guidance and oversight of the congressional committees. I think that's the best way to get a result that will ultimately preclude commercial end users, such as the folks represented on this panel, from being inadvertently cast as swap dealers.
Thank you for that. And you've touched on this a little bit, but has the CFTC's approach to rulemaking and the resulting rules caused any of your members to restructure, reduce hedging, trade less efficiently? Could you maybe explain that in a little more detail?
Yeah, I mean, I think that our industry, thank you, our industry is heavily regulated at both the state and the federal level. In some cases, there are overlaps between the regulation. The Dodd-Frank Act did call for the FERC and the CFTC to put in place an MOU. That memorandum of understanding was really never put in place, and I think that is an issue of some concern for our industry. But in many cases, I think, you know, one of the things, many of our companies are set up as holding companies, and in order to be efficient about how they trade and to separate the regulated businesses from the non-regulated businesses, they have, you know, trading entities within there. And our real concern, and we felt that that was an appropriate way to make sure that the overall entity would be able to maintain its end-user status, since the purpose of that trading entity was to trade on behalf of the end-user. Because of this financial entity concern that I put in my statement, that's something that, that end-user status could be lost or that advantage overall. So I think that's an example of a real concern with the way that the rules are coming out, also the interaction between the other prudential regulators and the CFTC, and that's something that we hope can be resolved.
I appreciate that. Mr. Soto, in your position, your primary focus, I understand, is to inform your members of the regulations they must adhere to and assist them in staying between the lines, so to speak. Can you explain for the committee why regulatory certainty is so critical to what you do, and elaborate some more on specifically what that means for business planning?
Thank you. When business, our industry, the natural gas industry is heavily regulated. There are several federal and state agencies that have some oversight over the actions and activities and operations of the utility. So we are, our members are used to compliance, and they build sophisticated programs to make sure that they understand each of their regulatory obligations, chart them out, make sure all of their transactions and operations are consistent with those obligations, and the difficulty comes in if they don't understand what those obligations are requesting them, whether a particular transaction would be subject to a specific set of regulations, or overlapping or conflicting regulations with another agency, or whether a particular operation has to be done in a certain way. IT systems, resources have to be devoted in order to comply with record-keeping or reporting requirements. Whenever those regulations are unclear, those operations are disrupted. And so we're hoping that, again, and the theme that I've been trying to express today is the notion that we need to get answers from the agency on, in defining all of their regulatory obligations, very clearly, very definitively, from the commissioners themselves, and not necessarily from staff actions and no-action letters and interpretive guidance. It's got to be the agency through the process. We file comments, answer the comments. That's what we're really seeking.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I yield back the seconds I owe you from yesterday.
All right. Let's the record reflect that. Appreciate that. Chairman Yostback, Mr. Scott for a second round, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Goford, let me go back to you. You know, in my opening statement, I remarked about our, my concern about the banks purchasing these warehouses and holding onto these tons of aluminum and other commodities, oil, tankers, all that. Tell me why you feel, where is the danger there? What do we have to look forward to? And can you explain for us why your position is that this should not be?
It's almost as though the country's being turned back about 100 years to the turn of the 20th century, when Teddy Roosevelt first broke up the Great Trusts, and it's based on the very same reason, that the concentration of power in one place, of an entity that controls the physical market to an extent that it has the ability perhaps to manipulate prices. It takes vast positions in paper markets, so it's dealing with both sides of the energy marketplace, and at the very same time, it's selling us our fuel as a wholesale supplier. It has another division that's helping us hedge those purchases, because we are literally tens of thousands of businesses whose responsibility it is to try to provide consistent and stable prices for consumers. And then on top of that, we can open an investment account and a 401K plan. And it seems like it's becoming just an extraordinary concentration of power in one place, and we think that there may be great danger in that. And I think that's where we have to be very cautious. This didn't start until 2003. I would only, you know, tell you, Mr. Scott, that most of these contracts went on the markets at the end of the '70s and the beginning of the 1980s. We functioned for over 20 years without the financial services industry's deep penetration into these markets, but since that has occurred, our concern has grown about the nature and extent to which we have distortions in the markets because of it.
Do you see a threat to a possible crisis in any way? Financial instability, inflated pricing, or any of those things? Because it's clear from the ruling of the Federal Reserve that the banks are operating basically within the regulations they have, and they have up to 10 years to dispose of these ownerships.
We're grateful for the fact the Federal Reserve is reviewing that decision with the potential toward it being overturned in September, and we would encourage the Congress to communicate with the Federal Reserve the very important nature of their doing that and doing it thoroughly.
You definitely see a danger to--
Yes.
--financial stability.
Yes.
With that. All right, now, back to the whole panel. I hope I get a better yes-or-no ratio here. And this will just be basically yes or no, but some of my Republican friends, and I do have Republican friends, I work with them very closely, but they are both in the House and the Senate supporting legislation to totally repeal Dodd-Frank. And with regard to Section 7, of which we're all involved in, and the commodity-- to Section 7, of which we're all involved in, and the commodities, derivatives, and so forth, do you agree with my Republican friends that it should be repealed entirely, and that the regulation, or lack thereof, that existed prior to the law is the appropriate regulatory regime? Yes or no?
That's a pretty full question. You know, certainly, some of the new things have come in around transparency have been helpful. There's some other things that have been hurtful. I'm not sure I can give you a full answer on a full repeal or not.
All right, good. Yes, sir. Mr. Newman?
I think generally the CMC position on that would be no, because the CMC was supportive of the goals of Dodd-Frank, which was to bring swaps into a regulatory arena that was somewhat comparable to what existed for futures.
So you don't support repeal? Yes, sir. Mr. McCone?
As I said in my statement, we support the goals of Dodd-Frank. We just need to get these issues correct.
All right. Mr. Monroe?
We would not.
All right. Mr. Soto?
I'm here on behalf of my members, and my members have not told me one way or another whether they support repeal or not. So I can't give you a definitive yes or no answer. I am here to tell you that we want the regulatory regime to be as clearly defined and understood as possible.
All right. And Mr. Gofford?
No, we're not in favor of total repeal.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman yields back. Mr. Lamoffa for five minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe I ought to ask, would you be in favor of partial repeal, which kind of sounds like that, because all or nothing is probably something you can't say, or maybe completely before with, you know, a little more clarity probably being reasonable. So I'd, maybe I'll just get you all to nod your heads, yes or no? Would you like to see partial repeal? I'm seeing some nods. Okay, all right. We've got some cleaning up to do, a lot of, a lot of it. And I hear a lot of complaints in general about, about the far reach of the law. You know, again, I think when some things went wrong with markets finance recently, some effort was needed. But as happens around here, we swing the pendulum, not just a little bit, we swing it all the way. So let me ask Mr. McMahon just a couple of, following up on, on, you're probably aware of my bill, H.R. 1038. If that was put into law, having to deal with the, the threshold for swap dealers from $25 million to the $8 billion for taxpayer-owned utilities, do you, if we don't get this, or if CFTC does not act in this manner, as they alluded to yesterday's hearing, do you think the effect on ratepayers is going to be detrimental without this, without this fix?
Ultimately, you know, utilities and our members can, can go two different courses. I mean, I think that if, you know, if the threshold for the de minimis level went down, you would find people not doing a lot of the hedging and activities that would cause them to cross that threshold. So what that would mean, at the, at the end of the day, again, our goal is to deliver affordable, reliable, stable rates to our members. So what, what that would do is basically cause us to do less hedging, which would probably cause more volatility in rates because of the inherent nature of the fuels and feedstocks that we use to generate electricity. So I think that you would just see a movement toward more physical sites with transactions, which can be expensive, and you would see, you know, a movement so that you wouldn't become regulated like a bank and a swap dealer. So we think this is very, very important to get this right, because at the end of the day, there was a recognition that the, the activities that the companies and industries do on this table do not create systemic risk, which was ultimately the objective of Title VII, to address systemic risk in Dodd-Frank. And so we think that getting the level right is very important.
Yeah, you, you kind of answered my second follow-up on that, is the whole thrust of our legislation is what did taxpayer-owned utilities have to do with the financial crisis anyway? You know, so we think it was maybe an oversight or little lack of common sense on that. For Mr. Soto, I'm, I'm interested in the, in the problems we keep hearing about the no-action letters. Was, could you provide an example of a time when, that you really had to rely on the relief of a no-action letter, or get regulation clarification from, from CFTC on that?
As I described earlier and today, and in my testimony, there, there's uncertainty in the, and confusion in the industry as to how certain gas supply transactions would be treated, whether they'd be treated as exempted or excluded forward contracts, or whether they should be treated as trade options, or whether they should be treated as wholly as swaps. And, and part of that confusion was resolved a bit in the CFTC's proposal, proposed rule to treat trade options with a lesser regulatory reporting requirement. But as that reporting requirement deadline came nearer and nearer, and people were still confused as to what transactions would be, could we report these as trade options, or would they still be excluded? The CFTC granted no-action relief as to how to report trade options, which gave the industry a little bit of a breathing room, knowing that in case they had to report these transactions, at least they could report them under a lower reporting burden as trade options. And so people breathed easier a little bit. But the fundamental question of what transaction is a swap, what transaction is excluded as a forward, what transaction is a trade option, that's still very unclear.
And the last-minute nature of those clarifications made it probably even more difficult to
Indeed, I think-
Running down two different tracks, et cetera.
I, I think the, the relief was granted within a week of when the deadline came due.
Yeah, all right. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman yields back. Ms. Hartzell for five minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today to let us know how the implementation of the Dodd-Frank is impacting each of you. Earlier this year, I introduced H.R. 2136, the Small Business Credit Availability Act, and that would exempt certain end users, such as farm credit lenders and nonprofit electric cooperatives, from the financial entity definition in Dodd-Frank. If they're outward swaps, exposure does not exceed $1 billion. And I've since worked with Representative Michael Grimm from New York to ensure a comparable exemption was included in his bill, H.R. 634, which passed overwhelmingly in the House earlier this summer. And that excludes these end users from costly capital and margin requirements. So I was wondering, Mr. McMahon, can you elaborate on the effects of including end users like electric companies and rural electric cooperatives in the financial entity definition?
Again, I think, you know, going back to the question of, I think it would have a very detrimental effect of, of being classified as a financial entity, because you would lose your end user status. Even if they, you know, one entity within a holding company was classified that way, they would not be able to trade on behalf of the regulated entity who is the end user. So I think that would be very detrimental. And I think generally, we've looked at this issue more broadly in terms of, you know, if the, if the end user status was taken away, and all of the swaps and derotus transactions had to be transacted, you know, on exchange or with margin posted, what the impact would be on our companies. And we've estimated the impact from a cash flow standpoint of between $200 and $400 million per year. And that would have a significant impact, because again, we're in the midst of a major capital expansion. And in some cases, you know, that's half of your capital budget for the year. So, so it's a significant number. And again, I think that companies, if they were subject to those sorts of margin requirements, they would back off of their hedging, most likely, and to some degree redirect money toward, toward other things that were in capital spend programs and so on. So it would have a negative effect, and that is why it is so important that our companies are not in any way classified as financial entities, and that the end user status is robust.
Would it have an impact on the rates of your ratepayers if that, you know, have to $200, $400 million more in capital needed? I assume you'd pass those on?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there's absolutely an impact, because at the end of the day, we're a rate-regulated industry. We're in the middle of this, in the midst of this on an industry basis, about a $90 billion per year capital spend. And your average company's capital budget may be in, in the range of about a billion dollars. So having the ability to manage that price risk, as we do it right now, where we don't need to post margin, where we are end users, it's very cost-effective. And, and our customers get advantage of the fact that we're very creditworthy. So our counterparties don't ask us to post margin. But as Mr. Monroe said, in some cases, if we do post margin, we want to do non, you know, we want to do something like use a power plant, or use a physical asset. And having that flexibility is very important. So these, these issues all kind of tie together, but at the end of the day, it's about delivering affordable rates, reliable rates to our customers.
Yeah, exactly. And, and stable, like you mentioned earlier.
Absolutely.
Reliable, stable. I thought that was very good. In your opinion, how should the definition of financial entity be changed to ensure that commercial, commercial end users are not inadvertently regulated as a financial-
Well, I think, you know, from our perspective, and thank you for the question, our perspective is, commercial end users should be explicitly excluded from that definition, so that we will not be sort of brought in through the actions of, of prudential regulators or the CFTC into that definition. We should be explicitly excluded.
Very good. Well, we're going to keep trying to work and help that happen.
Thank you so much.
You bet. And I wanted to ask Mr. Cordes a question here, because yesterday I asked Commissioner O'Malley and Weigand about the damaging proposed rule on residential interest and same-day margin calls for farmers and ranchers. And I'm cautiously optimistic from their answers, I don't know if you had an opportunity to, to hear that, but that the changes will be made, and they feel like there's a staff drafting such as we speak. But for the record, can you please elaborate on why the proposed rule could harm farmers and ranchers?
Yeah, I, I did catch part of that testimony, and it's good to hear that some things are being redrafted, looked at. I would say from perspective, if it's not, here's what's going to happen. Going forward, you will have to be ready for that one-day event that might happen once or twice a year. And for a firm like ours, or in our industry, where you're normally hedgers, and if you get a big market move up, you've got to be prepared to have that money on your balance sheet at that time, not when the margin call shows up at the end of the day or later, at that time. There was periods in our system in the last few years, and some of these days, I mean, it might be at $100 million a day, needs to be. You would have to throw it on your balance sheet just to be ready for that one-day event. Firms are not going to do that. What you're going to do is you're going to say, okay, customer, we're going to have you put some skin in this game. And by that, you're going to have to increase your margin requirement that's on deposit with us. That's going to affect their working capitalists. And I think we've heard on some of the other ones, working capital is precious, and that costs resources, and ultimately hits the bottom line.
Absolutely. As a farmer who's, yeah, okay.
Gentlemen, I was just, Mr. Davis for five minutes?
Thank you, Chairman Conaway. And as it always is on these committee, these committee hearings, when you're one of the last to ask questions, I had a lot of great questions to ask you, but almost all of them have already been asked. And, Mr. Chairman, am I the last questioner? In this round? Oh, another round. Okay. Well, then I will keep going. I was going to yield back. I, I had some, some discussion questions, especially for Mr. Cordes and, and Mr. Monroe. But again, they've already been asked. But I think what we've seen here today, and what we continue to see, is laws like Dodd-Frank that have great intentions have consequences. And I, from the testimony that all of you have given, have given us is, the consequences are going to be passed on to the consumers. The flight I, I take on Southwest Airlines from Reagan National to St. Louis, you know, to comply with these rules, the cost that I and so many different consumers in this country will pay will go up. The cost to provide electricity will go up. The cost to, to provide our agricultural products in central and southwestern Illinois to our local grain elevators will go up. It's the law of unintended consequences when it comes to Dodd-Frank. And I, I know there are concerns. We have agreements, and there are those who disagree with the effectiveness of this, of this piece of legislation. And with that in mind, you've all been asked specific questions by different members of this committee. I want to know from each of you, if you decide, is there any question that we haven't asked you? And is there an issue when it comes to Dodd-Frank that we have not addressed, that you would like to let the committee know is, is a concern with your industry or with your particular business? So with that, I'll start with Mr. Cordes, if you have any issues.
Not specifically an issue, but I, I think it gets back to what we talked about, this one-size-fits-all. And I think your original comments about, and I hear this a lot from our customers in the industry, saying, okay, what did we do? Why are we subject to this stuff? We were not the cause of all this. We understand there's Dodd-Frank legislation, but why are we being asked to do these kind of things? And why are my costs going up? And what can we do about it? Seems to be kind of the general comments that I hear back.
Thank you. I hear that from many of my farmers.
I'll get a little, little more granular with you. One of the things that hasn't been talked about today, but is of, on CMC's list of things we're concerned about, is it was part of the position limits rule that got tied up in court. So we're going to be, we're going to be soon, if, if they resurrect it the way it was in the, in the proposed rule, we're going to be doing daily reporting of physical positions. Currently, it's agricultural commodities only, and they're reported to the commission on a monthly basis. And we went round and round with the commission on that as they were developing this particular part of the rule. We thought we had won that particular battle too, and they said, okay, you're right. We will, we will continue to allow you to do monthly reports. However, when we looked at the fine period, it's monthly reports of daily positions. And we, you know, if you look at the history of the CFTC on, on these physical reports, they, at one time, they, they were doing them on a weekly basis, but that was just way too much information for the CFTC, so they, they pushed it back to a monthly basis. So that's something else. This is something they're, they were getting ready to have the industry start doing. For, from our perspective, very little benefit, and it's still, it's still percolating out there.
I think from the electric utility perspective, the one issue that would be very helpful would be to have, that we haven't discussed already, is to have that memorandum of understanding between FERC and the CFTC that was mandated under the Dodd-Frank Act, to actually have it hammered out, put in place. Because I think that would help to address some of the regulatory uncertainty that, that some of the other panelists have alluded to with respect to jurisdiction, and some of the issues between the cash market, the futures forwards, and derivatives markets. So I think that would be very helpful.
I would just want to make it crystal clear that the additional $60 million that we talk about in terms of cost to Southwest from the real-time reporting rule is not some sort of $60 million that's going to the government in a new tax, or to some regulation, a regulatory group. This is a, a, a group of hedge funds that have, that have written specific, that they have technology that they've built, that has been handed to them by our government, to, to have free information that they then use to trade against our counterparties, and it costs us more. And so that is money going from Southwest to hedge funds, just to be very clear about that.
Thank you.
Echo remarks from Mr. McMahon. I've talked a lot about uncertainty, regulatory uncertainty today, and a lot of that derives from transactions that have traditionally been regulated by FERC, to, that, that are now being regulated by the CFTC, or trying to be regulated, or questioning being regulated by the CFTC as swaps. And so what we really would like is for Congress to sort out and, and say, look, FERC, you take care of these transactions, and the CFTC, you take care of these transactions. Right now, we have this crazy Venn diagram of, of overlapping jurisdictions, and, and it's causing disruptions in the industry. Now, the CFTC, or the Dodd-Frank Act, Congress has already included provisions to sort out the jurisdiction between the CFTC and the SEC. Is there something that can be done between FERC and the CFTC?
Mr. Gofford for a couple of seconds?
Yes. I, I would ask, who has the big picture? In Congress, for example, you have Division of Responsibilities between agriculture, financial services, and banking. Who has the big picture between all three? We created a massive piece of legislation that ostensibly gives responsibilities to four different agencies, each of which overlap, some of which don't necessarily overlap, but could. Who has the big picture over all of those things? Because what we did, while it may have been important in many instances, has created enormous amount of not only uncertainty, but additional cost, and a very difficult time trying to sort out what to do next.
Thank you. If I had time, I'd yield it back, sir.
Well, the record reflects that you're over by a minute or two. We'll take that into consideration at the next hearing. As a record, myself for five minutes, second round. Mr. Soto, on the delay of the historical reporting requirements back in April, what impact is that having on your membership in terms of challenges in reporting? And what impact would a second no-action letter have on your membership?
Well, the no-action relief is actually giving the industry a little bit of a breathing room in understanding what their compliance obligations are. So in that, in that respect, it was, it was helpful to the agent, helpful that the agency provided some relief. But it really recognizes that the, the process for defining the regulatory obligations is, is not strong enough. So if, if, if it comes to the next deadline, either no-action, additional no-action relief is required. But really what is required is for the agency to issue final rules that are, that are clear. And it's strengthening that agency rulemaking process that's important.
All right. One of the things we've talked about is the cost-benefit analysis that's, we're going to try to strengthen those provisions in the bill. Looking back at Dodd-Frank and the estimates of what the costs and benefits were, were going to be to the system, can any- to be to the system, can any of you, or would any of you be willing to quantify the differential, if any, between what the commission said was going to be the costs of compliance with all of these new regulations in various areas, and what your personal experience or your members' experience has been in actual cost of compliance? Anybody have a sense of benefit, quantify that for the committee? Mr. Cordes?
I don't remember exactly what was stated in the bill, but I would tell you, from our perspective, whether it's ourselves, the CHS, or other members within NCFC, pretty much everyone would give you the response that their costs and compliance are probably double what they were three, four years ago.
I guess, yeah, thank you for that. I was trying to get a differential between what the CFTC said were going to be your costs and what's been the actual experience. Some of that may be proprietary that you don't want to, you don't want to fess up to, but is anybody have a number? Well, if you think of a number, or if it comes to you, we'll, we're going to try to defend strengthening the cost-benefit analysis in the, in the bill, and so we'll be working through those provisions. So I want to thank our panel for being here today. I also want to ask unanimous consent to include in the written record reports from the Coalition for Derivatives End Users, and the report from ICI, and from the ABA. So with that, before we adjourn, I'd now like to turn to the ranking member for a closing statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Let me just extend a great appreciation to each of you for coming, taking our time out of your busy schedule to come. Your viewpoints have been well appreciated. We have a number of challenges before us, and we're going to get there, and we're going to avoid another financial crisis for sure. So thank you very much for coming.
I also want to thank our members. Clearly, the Dodd-Frank law itself, as well as the regulations that have been put in place to try to implement it and grant guidance to the system, is going to cost the industry and ultimate customers more money. The offset that should be, though, that there are benefits to the markets, that the markets are better protected, that there's less systemic risk in what's going on. What my relatively naive view is that we've going to spend an awful lot of time on risks that can never reach the systemic level, and the costs associated with all of those compliance costs on risks that really, at the end of the day, don't make a big deal, and that we've lost sight of the bigger issue. Dodd-Frank, in my view, was intended to prevent a systemic meltdown. I'm hard-pressed to gather up many of, all of your users at any one point in time and have them do something stupid that would systemically put risks to the overall financial market. And yet, we have burdened them immensely with additional regulations. And so one of the things we'll try to do with the reauthorization is not re-trade Dodd-Frank, not undo it, but look at it, particularly from a common sense standpoint, is do we really need that information every single day in order to regulate what we need to regulate? There are risks in every market. There are risks in every transaction that you take. That's why people make money and lose money. But it's the systemic protection of the markets and the fairness of those markets that ought to be the deal. And we see an awful lot of this regulation that, at the end of the day, does not protect from a systemic meltdown that was driven, that drove the, particularly for that meltdown that drove Dodd-Frank. Thank each one of you for coming here, the preparation that you did, the money that you spent getting here, and all that team behind you that put together the, your very informative written comments. Those will, of course, go into the record. And I've got an announcement. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplemental written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member. This hearing of the Subcommittee on General Farm Commodities Risk Management is adjourned.